Hey, Mrs. Hernandez?
Yes.
Would your students like to lead us in the A Bledge Legions tonight?
Sure.
We didn't talk about that.
Let's go. We're ready. So if your kids want to lead us, that'd be helpful.
From right here, right?
You can do whatever you want to. But they just gotta lead.
Uno, dos, tres. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Gracias. Okay, I need a motion, uh, make a note that, um, there's only four of us here tonight. Dave Maitis. Heidi's really sick, so she called me and said she was not feeling well, so. And then Kyle is out of town. So make a note that there's, uh, four of us here tonight. So I need a motion to approve an adopted agenda, please.
So moved.
Uh, Marion made the motion and Beth seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I heard four zero. MSBA Board Report.
Welcome to the September edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. With schools across the state back in session, don't forget to share the excitement of students, staff, and the entire public school community with your local legislators. Invite your legislators to celebrate the return to school with a day tour in your school district. MSBA President Jonathan Russell says that activities such as legislator visits are just part of year-round advocacy efforts.
Well, it's important because you don't want to, the first time that you ask them about an issue, to be at the Capitol with...
Sorry. Trying to make sure that audience is connected.
Back in their districts is a perfect opportunity to start to develop that relationship.
When the legislature returns in January, Missouri is guaranteed to have a new governor, new leadership in both the House and Senate, and at least fifty-eight new House members and ten senators, almost a third of the legislature. MSBA Senior Director of Governmental Relations, Branch Shields, says that there are ways that school board members can help these new legislators as they take office.
Legislators will look for trusted sources of information and advice on a variety of topics. And you are perfectly positioned to be a trusted voice on public education issues for your community. But the building of these relationships with legislators doesn't begin in January, it begins now. One of the best ways to engage current and future legislators is to invite them into your schools. Help show them the fantastic work your students and teachers are doing.
And with the start of the next legislative session just around the corner, make sure you don't miss the upcoming Fall Delegate Assembly. This delegate assembly is the chance to have your voice heard on issues surrounding public education as we head toward the next legislative session. The Fall Delegate Assembly will be held during the Friday of Annual Conference. And if you haven't registered for the conference yet, it's not too late. The 2024 MSBA Annual Conference, in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials, will be held October seventeenth through the nineteenth in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, plus the Education Expo and another great lineup of general session speakers. And once again, the My Favorite Book Drive will be back at the Annual Conference as well. Donate your favorite pre-K through third grade book and be entered into a drawing to win five hundred books from Scholastic. Increase your district's chance with your whole board's participation. At least six districts will win. Each winner will receive at least one curated Scholastic collection of books along with donated books. Winners will be announced at the Second General Session on Saturday. One of the primary areas of emphasis for Jonathan Russell during his year as president is literacy, and he says that the My Favorite Book Drive is a great way to help students.
I just want to extend a challenge to all board members to make sure that you bring some books to donate to our Book Drive at Conference. For every book that you donate, you get your name put in a drawing to win some books for your school district. So I won last year, and that was amazing. I brought three books last year and got three chances to win. Literacy is the key to all education. You know, once you, um, gain a really good, strong reading skills or a passion for reading, that leads, that opens so many other doors in every other subject.
That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time in your board meeting, and we'll see you in October for the next MSBA Board Report.
Does anybody want to add anything before Amy makes a special announcement? Amy's voice yours.
Okay, I just wanted to honor and share a special recognition from one of our very own, uh, board members. Sorry, Mary. Um, so, uh, Mary Graeber is the, um, twenty-twenty-five statewide award winner for the Carter D. Ward Excellence in Advocacy Award. As you know, she, um, takes tremendous strides in advocating not only for Wright City but public education in general, so to be the statewide winner is quite a feat, and we're very proud that she serves on our board, and she's served on our board since nineteen-ninety-five. Um, she's donated and volunteered a lot of time, um, and she also holds one of three Board of Director seats on the Executive Committee for MSBA. So we just wanted to give her a shout out and say congratulations, and we're proud that you were here with us at Wright City.
Okay, uh, next time on the agenda is high school presentation.
All right, well, congratulations, Mary. I gotta follow that now. Let's go. We've got some deserving honorees. Uh, and we have our Spanish Club out here in just a second, too. First off, uh, I want to honor our outstanding volunteer board. If I could have Ben Farrell, please come forward. So, uh, we always honor a lot of volunteers that do something really big for the school and for the district. And when I say big, in Ben's case, he went real big, like Big Rick, like eighteen-wheeler big, okay? We were able to get new track equipment, they used it at the State Meet, had our name, had Wright City on it, but then we had to get it from Jeff City to here. That is standards, that's mats, that's hurdles, that's, uh, blocks, all this stuff, right? How are we gonna get it here? Ben has a truck, uh, usually has a flat trailer for metal, uh, but he was able to get a boxed-in trailer, went to Jeff City with some other folks, got everything loaded in his truck, brought it back, and we got it all off the truck. I got to help unload that. Uh, but, you know, his own time, his own money, his own fuel. Uh, he has two daughters, one that just graduated to Mississippi State now, Charlie is, and Ada is still here on the track team, um, participating in other sports as well, uh, but we can't thank him enough for such a selfless thing to do, took his own time and effort to bring all that track equipment back for us. So I've got, uh, the board ready, please. I got a pen. We got a little of help here, too. Uh, next, we have our Distinguished Alumni Award, um, and this time we're, uh, lucky enough to be able to honor, um, a former student and coach here at Wright City, Dave Gerdmann. If I could have Dave come on up here. Uh, Dave was part of nineteen-sixty-six state championship team, was a co-captain, graduated in nineteen-sixty-seven, taught and coached at Winfield. He has some funny stories about the beginning of that, uh, and then came here to Wright City to teach and coach and as the athletic director, uh, how many years was it here?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two is what he told me. Um, on that, uh, got to coach his own sons, won some district championships, went to a Final Four. Funny story, though, uh, one of his players from that team became a distinguished alumni before him. But there's a story behind that. I tried to honor Dave once before, but I did it when we were gonna present in January, uh, and he was in Florida. So Florida, yeah, he said there's a lot of other deserving people, which he's right, which he's right, uh, but he's definitely deserving, too. Went on to coach at Fort Zumaup North as well, uh, made the Basketball Hall of Fame in twenty-fourteen, Missouri Coaches Basketball Hall of Fame. We have a banner in the gym, uh, next time you're in there, look on the, what would that be, the, which wall is that? One where all the championship banners are, down on that end, uh, as well. So a great career in education, a lifelong Wildcat, a lot of ways, uh, bleached blue and gold, and we're really honored to honor him with our Distinguished Alumni Award.
Thank you.
And at this time, uh, we will have our Spanish Club present. We're real proud of the strides, uh, Ms. Hernandez has made with the club, growing the club and all the new things that they've done. I told her this had to be five to ten minutes, they've been working real hard to compress it, so we're trying to make it to keep the time down.
We're good.
They're good, they practice on it, so I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Hernandez and the members of the Spanish Club if they don't come on in.
Okay, so we're tied in here.
I know. Here, I'll, I'll...
Right, I'm gonna come all the way back here. Right? We don't bite, you can come this way. So I will start us off, um, I'm Julie Hernandez. I actually attended Wright City K through eleven, and my senior year went up to Wentzville to take German, and now I've been back for three years teaching Spanish. Um, these, I get to work with some of the best of the best, um, and you're going to see this right now. Um, we would have, um, some guys with us, but there's this little soccer game going on right now. Most of the team is, is, of the guys, they're on the field, so I'm gonna turn it over. You're, you're going to see how blessed I am, so.
Please tell me next slide whenever you're ready.
Hit it.
All right, my name is Norma Diego, I'm a junior at the Wright City High School and I'm talking to you about the Spanish Club. Spanish Club provides an avenue for students to experience the language and culture outside of normal lifestyles. Hispanic Heritage Month also provides a way to reflect, um, the contributions made by Hispanics to our society, our culture, and our country. It lasts from September fifteen through to October fifteen of every year. Hispanic, our Hispanic Club, Spanish Club strives to make a difference, and hopefully you will see it through our presentation. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ashley Luna Martinez, and I'm a sophomore at the Wright City High School, and I'm gonna be talking about our club motto. The purpose of our Spanish Club is to share the rich culture that accompanies this language while promoting an understanding of the diversity within the language and culture itself.
Hi, my name's Ami Daniela Ruiz Sago, and I'm a junior at the Wright City High School, and I might be having, obviously, speaking to you guys about the amount of participants in the Spanish Club. In the beginning of Spanish Club, we had at least five people in our Spanish Club, but now we currently have around fifty or so people in the Spanish Club. And then these are the few people we have in our Spanish Club. And then, uh, a new element of Spanish Club is that we now have, uh, this year we now have school leaders. The tougher part is to be a school leader is that, uh, you have to be a upperclassman, uh, be, uh, have a willingness to actively participate and be a good standing advisor.
Um, hi, my name is Charles Navas Guda, I am a senior at the Wright City High School, and I'll be talking about the club meetings. At first, we follow an agenda. With Miss Hernandez's class, we start with a plan of agenda. Uh, the agenda is based on, um, the events we have or the events that are gonna come up, and then we provide a culture snack. Uh, after we discuss the agenda, uh, we, uh, provide a culture snack that we steward to use it, um, and then, on which of those snacks is, uh, chipped with the salsa con salsa marinara. And then after, we do a, uh, cultural activity. Uh, Ms. Hernandez tries to bring up a cultural activity during the meeting, and one of them is, uh, cascaroles. It is, uh, from, during Easter, and it's very autumn type. And those are some, uh, in the bottom picture is us, um, coloring a sugar skull during the Dia de los Muertos, and then on the middle picture is us playing cascaroles outside, and on the top picture is us starting the Fiesta Night.
Uh, hi, my name is Juliana Casala, and I'm a sophomore at Wright City High School, and I'm gonna be talking about field trips and others. Uh, we take field trips to experience different aspects of culture in a much fuller and enriched way. It has been enlightening to see the culture in real-life instances outside of school. And this is a picture of when we went to the Palma for one of our club. Uh, we also enjoy participating in different community events by community, folkloric parade, and this is a picture of the Day of the Homecoming.
Hi, my name is Anna Eaton Hernandez, and I'm a senior this year at the Wright City High School, and here, this is at the History Museum from last year's Spanish Club, and we went to St. Louis, and this was the first time any member has experienced this holiday this way. Here in these pictures, uh, this is called an ofrenda, they have held there, and during this event, they had, uh, folklore dancing, music, arts and crafts, and, uh, speaking...
Storytelling.
Storytelling, and this is a group that went.
Hi, my name is Karen Diego, I'm a senior, I'm a senior of the Wright City School District. Uh, we're talking about inclusion of the Spanish language. Bush, the Bush Stadium, um, holds at least two events that are Hispanic in nature. Our club attend, attended one last year. It was called Baseball in the, Baseball in the Fashion. Benny Molina with Jerry Molina brother taught us some terms in Spanish, and then also took us, took some pictures with us. It was a pretty exciting experience, huh? These were, these were the students that attended the Bush Stadium. If, on the left side, on the left side, this is Benny Molina, the...
Yadi's brother.
Yadi's brother that took pictures with us.
Which team did he play for?
Cardinals.
No, Yadi played for the Cardinals, who did Benny play for?
Oh.
We don't know, we don't like Yadi.
Hi, my name is Natalia. For, for, we hold several, oh, oh.
Sorry, I started again.
Um, wait, is it them? Uh, my name is Natalia, you can go to the next slide.
Okay.
But for fundraisers, we hold fundraisers all throughout the year to, in order to fulfill our financial responsibilities. We have three V three soccer tournaments, a Fiesta Night, which is a dance, and some activity events. We also do concession stands and laieta purchase.
Um, it's Charles, and we're talking about, uh, about community service. Uh, we as a club have taken on the financial responsibility to sponsor the stores used to our graduation by seniors who acquired a seal of literacy. Each store decides its inception of the culture behind a language, and over there is a senior slash who acquired a seal of literacy. And last year, we also had a senior who completed the world language test in Mandarin, so his stall was reflective of his culture.
Hi, my name is Natalia Santos, I'm a sophomore at Wright City High School, and I'll be talking about the Seal of Balenciaga. The Seal of Balenciaga is recognition given to students who accomplish proficiency on two or more language tests. Reasons or purposes why students should want the Seal of Balenciaga. One reason is for employment. Your employees will want you more when you're bilingual, making getting a job more efficient. Another reason is for college. Colleges are, they're loved when you're dedicated and committed to learning your language, and the reason is to value diversity. It is important to acknowledge diversity or acknowledging and appreciating others and their differences in cultural backgrounds. Um, the requirements to acquire the seal of Balenciaga, you need a professional score on English to U C or a professional score on A C. You also need a professional score on the Stanford S, and you also have to accomplish and pass the world language test. It has, has four components, the reading, writing, listening, and speaking, and the work of the language training. You also need eight hours of community service. These are the two past years graduates who graduated and acquired the Seal of Balenciaga. These are a couple of pictures of our Fiesta Nights. These are the dances, the games we had, provided. Another games and a dance, we were dancing with Fiesta Nights. More some recent pictures? The whole club, we're not all of it, I wasn't even there.
And then we have Coach Ross who's doing what's called the, um, bolero, so if you can click on the, the video, this was at our Fiesta Night.
I can, yeah, I can tell you, it's hard to get that.
But he got it.
He got it.
He got it.
One more time.
I also have one more thing. As a club, we wanted to honor our principals for being so supportive of our efforts and our club, so we have these two certificates to honor them. This is for you. We also have one for Rainey, but he couldn't be here tonight.
Is that the soccer?
Yeah. Um, I also want to thank you for having us today. We really enjoyed the chance to share what our club is about. It really is how our culture is included when possible at the school. Our club is open to all, and thank you for your, your time this evening.
I'd like to get a picture of the whole group first. Amy brought a special treat. I'm gonna let her speak to that in a minute, but I want to get a picture before you do your spiel. Can I have you guys, can I have him come right here?
Yes.
And put the seal? Come on, quick.
I mean, Paul is gonna have.
Just get in the, get in the neighborhood.
Can we get the board first? Sorry, can you guys stand up for me at least in the background? Perfect.
Oh, in the background? You can go on the other side, I gotta be on this side, 'cause Daisy and I didn't get the memo, wearing a black shirt.
Beth, do you want to boost?
I can see you, Beth, you're good.
Okay, I got it.
All right, Amy? Amy?
A part of the presentation, I actually brought, um, uh, everyone a traditional Hispanic cookie that we, during the holidays or like, um, special events, that we have to have here. I'll be right back, I'm passing it to everybody.
Questions?
What are they called? What are they, Amy, what are they called?
These are called, uh, cookies.
They're, uh, marshmallow with coconut and full of deliciousness and calories.
I have questions. First of all, thank you guys so much, you all did amazing. Thank you so much. So how long has you, one of you spoke to the growth of the group? How long has your, um, has your, has your, the club been in existence to have that much of a, um, expansion? So in two years, you've gone from five-ish kids to fifteen, that's awesome, good job. That was awesome. That was an excellent presentation. You all did a wonderful job putting that together.
See that?
So good, well done. Well, that's so interesting to see what you have going on here at Wright Program.
All right. I gotta get back at the scoreboard before I get fired.
Thank you. Okay, before we get into the high school updates, uh, we're gonna need a special board meeting Tuesday night at six o'clock. So is everybody amenable to that? Okay, you'll be traveling. Uh, Erin, are you available Tuesday at six?
Probably. Yes.
Well, what time is your, what time does that end? Can we do seven-thirty? Can we do eight o'clock? Or we can do six AM in the morning?
Can we do five-thirty? Is it for one item?
Uh, we're gonna need more than a half hour.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there's, there's some VCOs coming up that we're gonna wanna talk about.
Well, I can probably... I can call, I can see if I can get out here, if we're gonna have form yet.
Can we, um, will, will Wednesday work? I'll make, can you do work, Austin? I'm, I'm flexible. Can, can you make Wednesday work?
Wednesdays, I can't do a Wednesday. I'm traveling in the evening, I'll be on late.
How about Monday?
I can do Monday, Monday's...
It's Monday? Works for me also. Can you do Monday?
The twenty-third?
Um, not until like eight-thirty, I, I mean, not for...
Well, I'll just tell part board that I have to do.
Well, why don't we do, why don't we do, uh, seven-thirty Monday, Tuesday, seven-thirties Tuesday night? That way, Mary, you can do most of the parts. So seven-thirty Tuesday night, and then you'll let, um, uh, Dave and, uh, Kyle and and just confirm that we get a form today. All right, so seven-thirties, seven-thirties, sorry about the lateness. Oh, that's great, thank you, Austin. Okay, so that's what we're gonna do, and I apologize for sprinting on that, I just found out about it myself, so. So Tuesday at seven-thirty PM, and we'll get something posted and get the information out in, uh, board docs, or anybody wants to look at it. Okay, um, having done that, um, so Wright City High School updates, Dr. Salvo?
Bobby Christopher, you have to follow the wonderful high school presentation.
I'm gonna have to top that, I'm gonna try.
Cookies.
Cookies, I think next week, Monday, Tuesday night, maybe over at Cookies Tuesday night. So lots happened last month, weather's been extremely great, really, for the last two months. A lot of progress, um, on the exterior side of things, we're, we're final grading areas as we work off to the east. If you drive by there, you'll see a lot of straw madding, vegetation finally starting to pop. You know, the downfall of not having rainfall is you don't see the sprouting of, of vegetation. On the plus side, we don't, we can take more of a footprint, so. We're supposed to get a little bit of rain over the weekend, although it'll be enough to, to weten some of the soil and let poorer vegetation sprout through, uh, but that's ongoing currently. Uh, on the interior side of the building, it's all finishes, really, all the way to area, uh, really, area F. Area F does have some finishes going on, area G's more in a rougher state. Areas A through D are fully ready, for the most part, ready to be punched, so that punch took place today. Uh, so that includes flooring, interior paint, other finishes, uh, making electrical terminations, trying to get the, the programming done, rooftop units finalized, all those types of things. Uh, the exterior facade's ongoing, so the masonry's been done for quite some time, uh, but they're working on the fiber cement system, the universe system, so that's ongoing. Uh, we're probably about a week, and I'd say we're about two weeks out from wrapping that up. Uh, and then obviously, as we're working our way to the east, we're, we're chasing the, the grading with that. Uh, athletic fields are ongoing, we're about two weeks out from having the, the track surface started. Uh, weather pending, but again, about two weeks out. Uh, vegetation again's ongoing, and all the, all the systems, sewer talking, um, access control systems, fire systems, all those type of things, get those up, up and functional for life safety, so we can occupy the building. Uh, next slide, please, Elizabeth. So looking forward, uh, we've got the bleachers and press box company mobilizing to the site. They're gonna start with the press box on the east side of the field, so then we can start doing the, uh, the pre-engineered metal building, which is the locker rooms, and then from there, they'll jump over the, the home field side on the hillside where all the bleachers are gonna sit, so that works, getting ready to start. Next slide, please. Uh, looking at some aerial shots, you'll see, um, final grading, obviously, probably looks a little different than the pictures we had last month. Uh, again, it doesn't show well with the overhead shot, but pretty much from the face of the building, which, what you're looking at, uh, facing you, uh, all the way to about halfway out, which is area D, all of that is now vegetated or planted, anyway. Next slide, please. Uh, here you can see the football field kind of looking off to the south. Uh, footprint of the building, uh, is complete with the exception of you got area F and area G, those are the areas that we're working on the exterior facade and trying to get the inside to catch up. And then again, working our way east, trying to get the baseball field into a condition we can get to start again. The rock road has continued all the way to, to Highway F now, so that road's complete. Uh, next week, we get a gate established, get that set so it's lockable and we don't have traffic coming in from the backside. But it's in motion. Uh, here we are, we are looking south. Just south, um, this would be the north elevation of the building, looking south, just an hour shy of it. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Here's a shot looking north. No, I'm sorry, we're still looking south, that's just farther back. Uh, so this is area G here where the cafeteria is. And then we just poured this stretch of concrete yesterday. This is all poured out, this is poured out, and we have a section here that's left open, that's where, uh, I think potentially brick pavers are going down the road. We're waiting on those details to come through. A lot of progress here the last few weeks. So right now, the focus is really wrapping up the, the final few pieces of concrete on the backside of the building where the dumpster or the trash enclosure is, with that little stretch of driveline to do. Uh, we have a little bit to do up at Volker Road, and, uh, essentially, all the concrete's done at that point. Uh, we're working our way towards the football field to get the, uh, get the archway established with the mading and get the finishes going on the exterior side to the hillside. It's coming together. Any questions or comments from the board?
Erin?
Anything?
Yep, thank you.
Mary?
Yeah.
Beth? Heidi, did you join us?
She is having sound troubles.
Sound trouble, okay. And then I don't have any questions right now, I'm sure, well, once the PCO comes, we may have, so...
Thanks, Austin.
Next, I'm, go ahead.
Okay, next on, um, the agenda is a, um, PCO that was submitted, PCO 99 for mechanical well roofing. Um, this was something where the, um, the work was already, um, completed, um, to avoid delays, is my understanding. But we have bond in right here to discuss any questions that you may have.
You just wanna give us a quick, uh, review of what happened here?
You bet. So the mechanical wells are the areas where the flat roof, so it's a membrane roof, it's where the flat roof sits and all your mechanical equipments on that area. There's a transition from a different roofing type, which is asphalt chingles. So what we had to do, we had to go in and frame that out, so there's a transition with the roof, uh, the roof insulation buildup. So we had to do vertical framing, get sheeting put on, tear back chingles, and then, uh, bring in membrane roofing and wrap up the vertical face where we had to do the additional framing. Uh, as Dr. Salvo mentioned, this work's been completed now for a couple of months. Uh, this was done on a CCD, we, we asked to do it this way, so we could get a direct proceed and not hold up interior finishes at the end of the day. Tracked it, it's time and material, uh, took a while to get all that stuff, you know, appropriately reviewed and compartmentalized and put together. Uh, so anyway, that's what we're looking at today. And then, excuse me, that work included the framers, uh, and then both roofing contractors as well. So you had the membrane roofing contractor, the asphalt chingle contractor, and then the driveway contractor.
Any questions for Bobby on this, uh, PCO? And just for everybody to know, how much was it?
I'm sorry.
How much was it?
$19,000. It's, uh, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and ninety-two cents.
Okay, so everybody knows what that amount is. All right, uh, and again, it came under the $25,000 that we gave Amy to, uh, authority to do, so, you know, there's nothing going on there or anything, so... Any questions? Do you need a motion?
We can call Heidi if you want to.
Well, I just, mostly for Madison, is when we did Madison, I love. So yeah, if you wanna call her, just put her on your speakerphone, that would be nice. Okay, so I need a motion for the, to approve this PCO, is that what you need?
Still moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I hear four zero. Anything else that Mr. Christopher needs to talk to us about tonight?
See you on Tuesday night, thank you, guys.
No problem.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, um, A-plus annual report. Who's, uh, doing that, Amy?
So Mr. Brooks, I don't know if you wanna do any proper introduction?
Uh, sure, yeah. Ms. Peyton, uh, one of our counselors for the second year in a row, has been in charge of our A-plus program. And she prepared tonight's report, um, and I've appreciated last year in this, uh, some of the new information that she's included in there, some of the graphs. They give us a little deeper dive on what the membership of A-plus looks like. And some of the things that maybe if they are not completing, why they're not completing. Um, and the reasons that, uh, those that are successful are successful too, I guess, so... If you have questions, I don't know if Ms. Peyton, if there's anything you wanna share right off the bat, I'm trying to...
Oh, I think, I guess, for the, for the two new people that are here tonight, um, last year, like Mr. Brooks had said, we really want, especially with pathways, we are having many individual conversations with our students to discuss what their plans are after they graduate. We are individualizing those plans. Um, what I took the board report last year, the level I took it to, was that I wanted to include not just the number of these people got it, these people didn't, but the people who did not, and they made the decision not to pursue A-plus, and really break that down for you as to why. What those conversations looked like, without giving you, you know, individual names or anything like that. But just to show that, um, Miss Summer and I are really working with these students, that we have students who their plans are to go out of state, no matter how many times we sit down with them and talk to them about summer school, and you come home during the summer, an A-plus might be good to have in your back pocket. And those students are taking the autonomy on their post-secondary plans, and they are, you know, explaining to us that this is just not a route that they wish to take. But then we do have students who are really successful with it, and we graduated 28 students last year, so...
A new good problem to have too, is we've had a couple of kids get to associate degree level before they graduate. So that it's kind of a moot point, uh, just for a handful of kids, or some that are even close to, so that has, uh, changed for a little bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Open to any questions?
Heidi, I'll go ahead, Erin.
Um, well, first of all, thank you so much for putting all of this together. As a parent of a high schooler, I know how much you guys push, um, A-plus and, and try to get everybody to, to sign up for it, and I really appreciate it, and I understand the struggles that you have, um, to convince kiddos to, to do that. So I appreciate everything that you do to, um, to try to get them to put as many tools in their toolbox as absolutely possible, so thank you for everything that you do. Um, I thought the graphs and everything and the breakdown that you did in this report was, was fantastic. So, um, thank you for all the information. Um, my, my question was, um, the, on the, the kiddos that are in the program, can you just kinda walk me through how we, like, at what point do we realize, like, there's, um, it looks like some of our kiddos become ineligible because of, um, hours? Is that like volunteer hours, or is that like, um...
Yes, yes, so though, that is volunteer hours, and I put, students turning contracts as early as freshman, you know? That puts them in the program at that start. And then in our system, we can start tracking down on that. They can tutor during summer school, before I ever am able to put it in their schedule. Um, students, I had two, that equated to two students last year who were in the program. I kept them in the program, because they kept, well, I'll do the hours, I'm gonna do the hours. And then it came down to the end, and they said, you know, no, if I can fit it in this summer, you're allowed, I think, if that is six months post-graduation, you can still get your hours in. So these two particular students had said, you know, I think that I might be able to get them in this summer. And I said, okay, so I kept them in, just in case that they did. And they have not followed up on that yet, but...
Are those all tutoring hours, or are they...
Yeah, sorry.
Those are tutoring slash mentoring.
Okay.
They are the requirements for the hours.
Um, I think there's a 25% leeway that it could be like a work experience.
Work experience, job shadowing on a career path that they're interested in.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Which would, you know, the 37.5 hours that is the tutoring.
Yeah.
And the 12.5 could be from that job shadowing. We don't have many take that route.
The job shadowing, yeah, no.
Sometimes, though, they do have a specific one, a more specific career, or someone they know that they wanna shadow. I mean, it's usually pretty specific when somebody wants to shadow.
Yes. And as far as the math score, was that more like the ACT score or GPA test score?
So the math score, you need to score proficient or advanced on an Algebra I or an Algebra II BOC. Or, there is that graph that we have at the very top of the report, so that's kinda, I call it like the backdoor way in.
Okay.
Um, if you take the ACT, that chart right there shows you what score you would need to have in the math section in order to be eligible for A-plus. And I always, Mr. Brooks and I have this conversation a lot, I, I was very good in school, very good. But if the math requirement had been there when I was in school, I was English all the way, I was not so much math. I do not know if I would have qualified for A-plus based on my math score.
Yeah.
And that's a hard conversation to have with some of those students who do struggle in that area.
So yeah, the math would have been a sticking point for me as well, but I'm actually able enough that I predate the A-plus program.
Anybody else, anything else? I just wanna echo Erin's, um, comments about how well you did this, uh, and I appreciate the effort you put in.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you.
Okay, is this, uh, just, uh, information I read to approve?
Just no permission.
Okay, next item is professional development program evaluation, Dr. Salvo?
So Dr. Bradley, uh, Hallie Bradley Gates will be doing this presentation.
All right, so this is a new program evaluation. Um, my understanding is there was a request that this be a new program evaluation beginning this year. So I was able to, um, kind of develop it for us, and so I wanted to just talk you through, um, how I came up with this program eval. If you wanna go to the next one, so, um, here it's just talking about, it's been the first year we, we've had this program eval for professional development, and the data that's provided in the evaluation is from the needs assessment that the staff filled out last school year. So the survey that they take where they can express what their professional development needs are. We can go to the next one. I shared a lot of data with you from that needs assessment, um, from last year. Um, and I just wanted to point out some of the strengths that I pulled from that data. And that is a high percentage of our staff feel like our impact teams are proficient or advanced. That's that PLC work that we do, so it's really awesome to see that they rated themselves high in that area. Um, their perception of the impact team meeting process was highly focused on analyzing data and then discussing best teaching practices. That's fantastic as well. Staffs, they also rate themselves highly in their ability to use assessment data to provide immediate and targeted interventions for students, and that's great too, and that's, um, been a focus of ours and continues to be. And then also, overall, the staff that took the survey, um, did seem very confident in their classroom management training and techniques. So that's another strength that I saw. If you wanna go. Um, some opportunities that I saw in the data is, um, it does, while, while our staff's perception of their impact team time was, was very good, um, there were, um, I think if I remember right, it was about 20%, um, that, so that they, there was time spent on some non-data-driven discussions. So there is some opportunity there to work on that. Um, the survey shows a need for some professional development, um, in RTI, response to intervention. That really stood out to me, I can tell you that our professional development committee is already looking at how can they plan for that for this year as they're looking at planning sessions for the next PD day after Monday, next Monday. Um, it also showed a need for some support with vertical teaming. Um, that's hard, that's a hard, it's such important, good work to do to help align our curriculum. And it really takes a strong structure in place to have those conversations and do that work. And so, um, the, the data from the survey did show a need for some support in that. Um, the survey showed a desire from staff for more training in, um, evidence or standards-based training. Um, the survey showed a need or desire for training in some behavior support, such as trauma-informed training, restorative practices. And then, um, the other, the other opportunity that I saw is, in the data, is that it's not really broken down necessarily by grade level, department, role, or what the PD activity was that they were evaluating.
Can I ask a question before we go on, Dr. May? Can you just quickly remind me of, um, the RTI and the vertical TV? Can you just give a brief description of what those two entail?
Sure, so RTI are the interventions that, um, teachers are providing in the classroom. So, um, what are we doing for our students, not, you know, not just that get, you know, that are proficient in what we're teaching, what are we doing for the students that aren't? And what are we doing for the students that are getting it and that we're still meeting their needs? So it's just, um, yeah, how are we intervening on all levels? Um, and then for vertical, um, those conversations are, let's say, we're getting our third grade team and our fourth grade team together, and we're looking at, um, you know, what standards are taught in third grade and what are in fourth grade, and making sure that we're aligned so that they're prepared from one grade level to the next.
Okay, all right, that makes sense, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so now if you wanna go to the next...
So while we're asking questions on this slide, the restorative practices, is that the ruler? Were they any more training for ruler, or is that something else?
So ruler would have some aspect of that, that is some social, emotional, but restorative practices, so when we have students who are struggling with behaviors, and maybe things are happening in the classroom or in the school, um, where the restorative practice is, what are we doing to, um, support as those students are, we're reteaching them the behaviors, they're coming back in the classroom? Um, so ruler has an aspect of it, um, but you'll see, um, even in our, um, discipline policy, that it'll mention restorative practices as part of that support and reteaching, um, with behavior too.
Well, so, so, because when I heard of restorative practices, you know, a lot of times when, when a child was suspended, or then, you know, part of their coming back to school was, uh, early off a suspension was, hey, if you do these activities for restorative, then, you know, then you got back into school early or whatever. Is that what we're talking about here, or are we talking about something else?
No, I think we're talking more classroom level, so those would be some, you know, let's, for maybe, I think historically, that's been done for a drug, a drug offense, where a student has had an out-of-school suspension, and then there's some like drug awareness learning as a restorative piece. Um, I think that the, this is more classroom-level restorative practices, um, you know, um, for example, um, a student might have an outburst or something that affects the classroom, and when that, how are we safely and effectively bringing that student back so that back students' needs are met, the classes' needs are met, the teacher, you know? How, those are the restorative practices that I believe they're speaking to in this survey.
So, okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth, one more, please. Okay, so all of that to say, um, I, I laid out some goals and some action steps as far as professional development is concerned. A pretty standard one, the first one is that we allocate 1% of our state foundation formula to PD, um, and that that PD is aligned with our CSIP, and 75% of those funds shall be spent in the same fiscal year. That is standard for every district. Goal two, that 75% of Wright City teachers will respond favorably about the amount and quality of professional growth and learning opportunities that are available to them. Um, and I'll talk about the action steps that go along with those goals. Um, I do want to first revamp our needs assessment survey to make sure that, um, the data that we're getting from that is very accurate and kinda drills down more to, um, department, grade level, so that we can support, make sure we're supported in the right areas. Um, a professional development evaluation survey already has been developed, actually, and will be administered, um, after each of the four professional development or CSIP days. And that feedback used to assess, um, how effective that PD was and help plan for further professional development. So our first CSIP date is Monday, and so, um, I've worked with the professional development committee to, um, create that, um, PD evaluation that we will use to get that information. committee to create that PD evaluation that we will use to get that information. A professional development plan to be developed and approved by the Board of Education that directly connects to the goals in our CSIP. And then a curriculum handbook to be developed and approved that will directly connect to the goals in the CSIP, but also will help guide the future professional development that's laid out in the PD plan.
Any questions for the report? Good, Holly, you may have her. I asked mine already, so I think Beth asked hers. So Mary and Erin?
No, I think I agree.
I do rate it as.
Beth has another question.
I have a program evaluation is new to the board, that the needs assessment has been in place for a number of years. Okay, the same question?
Yes. Yes. I, we could not access some of the previous years to look at, so I based everything off of just looking at last year's as our baseline data to start with. But having a program evaluation for professional development is new.
Right.
And I'm glad, I'm glad we're doing it.
Yes, okay, all right, great, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Veronica, I think you're next.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Great, great, we're good.
So text, the text here, and just data presented a little differently.
Yeah, pretty much. All right, so now we're going to talk about the ASBR. Next slide. What is the ASBR? Every year, each school district in the state of Missouri can release the ASBR, the annual secretary's board report. It is due August 15th. It's a year-end financial report of the district, and it provides financial information to DESI, professional organizations, and the public. Our audit has, and there's also, the full report is in the packet for your review. Our audit for this year hasn't been over 23, 24 school year, isn't quite complete yet, so there could still be minor changes to the ASBR. If there, if there is any, it will be noted when we do the audit presentation later this fall. Next slide, please. I got circled there in red, the 29.62%, that is our fund balance, that it's, we're in very good financial position with the, with the reserve like that. Our total revenue for this, for 23, 24 school year was a little bit over $32 million. Our expenses were $64.7 million. The transfers from the general fund and the teachers' fund came in at 1.5 million. Each year that transfer is done to bring the teachers' fund to a zero balance. A total of $798,281 was transferred to the capital projects fund from the general fund. That transfer is a maximum allowed by DESI, and is done in anticipation of the ongoing capital projects throughout our district. The other number I have circled there, oh, just, that $12 million in capital projects fund, that, I did want to note, that is kind of misleading because we do still have some bond proceeds that are restricted. So you can see underneath that 12 million is the money left in bonds that's restricted over 3.6. So that leaves our capital projects fund at 8.392,771,000.
So you quickly want to explain why our revenues were 32-plus million and the expenses were 64? I'm assuming.
Building a new high school.
So the bottom line here is, we got the money on the bonds, and then now we're spending that money.
Down.
Down, okay. So we're not deficit spending?
No.
Okay, I just want everybody to know that, we're not deficit spending.
Exactly. Yep. Any other questions?
All right, and you just, this is informational, or do you need the board to approve it?
Just informational.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, CSIP committee. Now that previous CSIP committee members were elected to the Board of Education, we can't have four Board of Education members on that committee. So we can have three. So Erin, I, and Beth could still do it, and since Kyle's not here, we can make a vote and say that we're the ones that are on it, and, you know, that's kind of me, I settled up. But seriously, I would, in all seriousness, I would like to remain on it. That's something I'm really invested in, so I'd like to remain on it.
I very much would still like to be part of the committee.
Erin?
I would as well.
So Kyle, you have anything you want to say?
I think, he wants to be the alternate.
Yeah.
That's what I thought I heard.
All right, so I think, but I need, I think we need a motion to appoint Erin, Beth, and myself with Kyle as the alternate to the CSIP committee for FY '25.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
The motion is, why am I laughing? Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? 4-0. Did Heidi end up, is she listening to this?
Um, not right now. I sent her something, you know, a lot of likes.
So the next item on the agenda is the MSBA delegate assembly. I had this added late because I don't think we're gonna, our next board meeting will occur before this. And so typically what we do is we go through this real quick on the stuff I had to vote on, and make sure that I am voting as the board wishes. So if you just want to take us to the stuff that I had to vote on, and then we'll quickly discuss, and then we'll go from there.
I think page nine.
I'm gonna pull it up because I can't read that screen.
All right, proposal one?
So I think that's ours, isn't it? Okay, I'm assuming I'm voting yes on this one?
I hope so.
Next one?
They like this one, by the way.
Okay, how about this next one? Mary, you want to kind of give us what to say about this one? In the meeting, a lot of your opinion is on it?
There was not a whole lot of talk about this one, you know, it's just, you know, we think, and we think our children should have plenty of food. So what they're saying is they support funding for school districts to provide free breakfast and lunch for all students. This was presented by the Columbia College Schools.
So in essence, whether you're free or reduced anymore, you would no longer, from this perspective, you wouldn't have to pay for lunch, and free and reduced wouldn't matter anymore.
Right. Well, I, I'm not sure how they would handle that situation.
Well, well, the thing is, I mean, the one thing I don't see on this one, as I looked at it, there isn't a, and I don't know how MSB would do it, but there isn't a fiscal note on it that, you know, what would it cost the state to do this? I'm not, I'm not against kids, you know, the schools giving free breakfast and lunches to kids. I just, you know, from a practical perspective, you know, can the state, is that where, I mean, if MSB had to choose to spend that money on breakfast and lunch, or they had to choose to do something else educationally?
Right, I understand.
Where, where would we, where would we want that money to be spent? And that would be the question I would ask.
That would be a good question for you to get up. I normally don't encourage Austin to get up to the mic, but that would be a good question for you to.
Because my issue is priority, okay.
And this, this would be odd for, for our district because it's preschool through fifth grade, and because our fifth graders are one of the middle school, that would be a little bit awkward, I think. Not, not, I mean, I think it would be great, but, yeah.
Is there anybody I could email that question to beforehand so they were prepared to answer it? Because a lot of times when I ask those questions at the mic.
I would, I would email Brent.
Okay. I will, Beth, Brad Shields?
Yes.
Okay, I will email him, and I will carbon copy you on that email. So, okay, so, but in, but in general, do you want me to vote yes or no on this one?
It depends on what their answer is, they're, I would say.
So here's my best judgment based upon the answer?
Right.
So you okay with that, Beth?
Yeah, okay.
Erin?
Best judgment.
All right. All right, you want to go to the third one, please?
Fine.
Okay, so California implemented something like this recently about cell phone restrictions, where they took them all away. Remember that?
There are several states that have actually, I just listened to a podcast about it with, and which, you know, how I feel about state legislature taking away local authority. But, you know, it's, we've done the same thing here, and I don't know, you guys could probably attest to what it's, the change that it's made in the classroom, but.
So we already have, so I'm reading this, including restrictions against unauthorized recorded students, faculty, and staff on personally-owned devices. Our policies already state that, do they not? So that's, to me, that, that last part should be redundant. I mean, I mean, don't we already have authority to do a top policies to do this if we so choose?
Yes.
So they just want to redundant?
Yes.
So should I just vote no?
I think it's supporting, I think it's protect, it's protecting local control to be able to do that without them, my impression would be without a fight back of saying like it's taking away, you know, personal rights of a student to be able to use their cell phone in class.
But see, to me, this looks like a solution to a more problem. Is it a problem today?
Probably in some place, I don't know.
Yes, it is a problem.
This is a problem?
Is it a problem in our school?
Well, not, not, not since the last two years, but maybe because of the support that we have, but it is a problem, and it's trickling down to the elementary level.
I took it as this is just supporting a local school, school district's right to determine their own policy on this.
But I was already under the impression we have policies against cell phone uses at the elementary and middle and high school. Maybe not?
So I know that the one difference between the middle and high school right now, middle is often where I'll do it, high school, we do a lot during passing lunch, pre and post.
Yeah, but, but, but that's, but that's something we chose to do.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, so my issue is with this is, is this, again, is this statement, I mean, if, if the elementary school is having a problem with cell phones, then don't, as a Board of Education, don't we already have the right to put something in the policy that says kids don't use cell phones at elementary school? I mean, that's just, I mean, I'm just giving a, for instance, but.
Well, I think, I mean, to me, when I read it, it's just supporting that.
Is this just to make sure that the, that the state legislature doesn't do what?
Cannot come in and say.
That does not do what California did?
Cannot come in and say that the school district can't restrict that, can't restrict use of cell phones.
So if you look at it from that perspective, then I should, I should vote yes on this?
I mean, it's supporting the school district's authority to adopt policy.
Okay.
If you, if you put the period there.
I think that's a yes vote.
Okay.
It doesn't affect our policies current or future, it's, it's protecting our right to determine our own policies. Right?
Well, if you look at it from the lens that Erin presented it, I would agree. All right, so that's a yes vote? That's it? Anything else in this document anybody wants to discuss? So in summary, yes, my best judgment, yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, moving on. I appreciate that conversation. CSIP reports, does anybody have any, I asked some questions about some of the reports not having percentages in them yet. Do you want to address that tonight, or?
Sure, we'll go back to the questions. And Holly, you might be able to answer some of these as well, but I believe it was decided to make sure we have accurate, full data, that's why some of them don't have data yet. We'd rather report on accurate, and sometimes the assessments don't perfectly align up with board meetings, so instead of giving what we have so far, we're, it'll almost be like a month behind, correct me if I'm wrong, to ensure that we have accurate data to share.
So I'm assuming that in the next, next month's CSIP reports, we see it?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, you can answer my questions. Anybody have any other questions on the CSIP reports?
I love the new format. It looks great. Kyle were here, he would say the same thing. It'll be good to see month to month, you know, the type of data and content that's coming in those reports.
That was worked already, and great, and, you know, so brought that, so kudos to the, to the team for, for working and coming to consensus on an agreeable format.
Okay, does anybody have anything else on the CSIP reports? Okay, moving on. Third reading of MSBA 2024B updates, we've gone through these, so I'm not going to go through them independently again. Unless anybody has, excuse me, unless anybody has anything they want to add, we're just going to go ahead and do the, do the motions.
I reread all of them today without no concern.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the third reading and adoption of MSBA's 2024B updates for BEDC, DFI-2, FFA is being rescinded, GBEBC, IND, JEC-1, JACA-2, JO-1, KH, and EEA-AP-1.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Quick question to the board. Historically in the past, we put the second and third readings in consent agenda. Is it okay in the future if we put them in consent agenda, or do you want to leave them out in the old business like this?
I'm, I'm good with third reading going in, but I'd kind of like second reading to be out.
Okay. Because that was one thing I talked to Amy about today was whether or actually this week about whether or not this thing should be in the center or not, and so now that we got you, we're a thing. Okay, I know we're going to pull employment from, is Heidi on?
No.
Okay, can you actually physically dial her phone and get her on speaker? If we're going to hire Madison Love, we got to have.
Actually, I'll just.
Well, whatever you need to do.
That'll be easier.
Okay, while we wait for her to do that, we're going to pull item C. Does anybody need to pull anything else? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Sands, item C.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
Your call has been fulfilled.
Okay, so on Monday night, Tuesday night, we are going to add Madison Love to the agenda? Is that okay with you?
She's calling back right now. Hi, Heidi.
Aye.
We are, we have you on speaker, and we are looking to approve the hire of Madison Love.
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion, so on item C for the employment, I need a motion to approve everybody, Sands, Madison Love.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second. Any more, make sure you're not related to anybody. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I heard, Heidi, did you say yes?
Aye, yes, sir.
Okay, I heard 5-0. Okay, now I need a motion to approve Madison Love for the middle school basketball and football tier full.
I'll make that motion. Second.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And those who abstain?
Aye.
There's a 4-0-1 on the acceptance, on the approval of that. Thank you. Okay, next thing, we're going to, thank you, Heidi, I know you're not feeling well, but that's what we needed you for, I'm sorry, okay?
Is there anything else you'd like me to do? I was watching for a while there.
Get feeling better.
Something else, if you have a special call.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Thanks.
Okay, so in accordance with Section 61021, the revised statutes of Missouri, the R2 Board of Education will meet closed session to discuss, one, legal actions in accordance with provision of, legal action. So, is there anything else to close session? Nope, that's it. So I just need a motion to run closed session for legal.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? We'll call starting with Austin. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I have 709, so if you can be back at your desk.